Thank you.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the January fourteenth, twenty twenty special meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have roll call?
Councilmember Agajanian.
Present.
Arpedian.
Quintero.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Aaron Ajarian.
Here. May we have your report?
The agenda for the January fourteenth, twenty twenty special public meeting of the City Council was posted on Thursday, January ninth, twenty twenty, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Before you, the first item is the Director of Community Development regarding five-one-five through five-two-three North Central Avenue, Stage One Design Review, case number P D R one-nine-two-two-nine-two-four. This was continued, this is continued from December seventeenth, twenty nineteen. One is a motion approving Stage One Design.
Ms. Beers.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. As you know, this item was before you on December seventeenth. The day was, was filled that afternoon, and Council made the very good decision of asking for this item to come back the first of the year. We're here today to provide you information on the Stage One, and Vista will be taking us through that presentation. Ms. Azati.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. This is an application for Stage One Conceptual Design Review for the project site located at five-one-five through five-two-three North Central Avenue. The proposal is to construct a seven-story hotel with a hundred and thirty-seven guestrooms, ground floor restaurant, meeting rooms and lounge areas, and a second-floor pool deck and fitness room. The applicant is Rodney Khan. The request is to receive Council feedback and recommendations regarding the mass and scale and site planning of the project. Staff has analyzed the project against the DSP standards and guidelines. A detailed analysis was attached as exhibit two to the staff report. As proposed, the project will comply with the new DSP standards and all zoning requirements and including parking, and no variances are required. Project location, the site is located on the southwest corner of Central Avenue and Duran Street in the DSP Transitional District. Currently, the site features a one-story fast-food restaurant with a drive-thru that was built in ninety-three and a two-story office building, originally built in nineteen-twenty-two. Both buildings and associated parking lots will be demolished as part of the development. The project site for the hotel does not include the surface parking lot west of the alley. The blocks along the west side of Central Avenue between Pioneer and Broadway are located in the Transitional District. The area surrounding the project contains multifamily residential development to the west, and along Central, there are high-density residential and mixed-use developments, as well as general and medical office uses. Site planning, the building is designed in a U-shaped form and occupies majority of the site with a large entry courtyard oriented towards Central Avenue. The project is providing a hundred and thirty-seven parking spaces where a hundred and ten are required by code. Parking will be in a three-level semi, or subterranean garage. Vehicular access is proposed from both the alley and a new driveway entrance on Central. As it relates to building setbacks, Central Avenue is designated as a mixed-use commercial frontage, which has an eighteen-foot setback requirement. This includes a five-foot parkway, ten-foot sidewalk, and three-foot building-adjacent zone. Duran is designated as mixed-use residential with a sixteen-foot setback requirement, which includes the five-foot parkway, eight-foot sidewalk, and three-foot building-adjacent zone. As proposed, the building is set back the required distance from both of the frontages. Hotels are identified as a priority use to provide a community benefit. They're an important component of a business district and often provide amenities which are available to the public, including restaurants and meeting rooms. Projects in the Transitional District can use the Community Benefits Program to increase their permitted height from sixty-five to ninety-five feet and the F A R from two to three. This hotel is using the community benefit incentive for both the increased height and F A R. The focus of the Stage One review is geared towards the overall mass and scale of the development, with the final details reviewed more thoroughly as part of the Stage Two The project has appropriately incorporated the required height modulations into the design. The roofline modulation is shown, adds visual interest to the skyline while reducing the scale of the building. The design has also incorporated the facade modulations required by the DSP standards along both street frontages. These modulations, along with detailing, articulation, and window patterns, provide visual interest at the pedestrian level. The new hotel is a contemporary design and uses architectural solutions such as human-scale materials, texture, windows, and offset building massing to articulate the street-facing facades. The building facades are primarily clad with masonry brick, and the design features a steel-and-glass tower at the building corner. At the ground floor, wood and steel canopies have been incorporated into the design. Staff will work with the architect during the Stage Two Design Review process to explore changes to the white stone material and metal cladding at the building lobby entrance to better integrate these elements into the overall design. The new hotel includes a two thousand five hundred and sixty square-feet entry courtyard along Central Avenue, which exceeds the minimum requirement for publicly accessible open space. Final details and programming for this courtyard area will be reviewed during the Stage Two Design Review Submittel. At this time, the applicant has submitted conceptual landscape drawing. The project also includes an approximately five thousand square-foot amenity deck on the second floor, which includes a pool and spa, as well as outdoor seating and landscaping. As proposed, the project complies with the new DSP standards and zoning requirements, and no variances are required. Staff is recommending that City Council approve the Stage One Design Review Application for the proposed hotel, subject to staff's recommendation. That concludes my presentation. Available for any questions.
Are there any questions?
Is the, anyone who's going to speak?
I do have some public speaking cards.
I'd like to hear those.
Okay, we'll do that first. Let's start with Rodney Khan.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, and City Staff. My name is Rodney Khan. My offices are located on North Brand Boulevard, here in the city of Glendale. We are proposing to construct a new Indigo Hotel. Indigo is part of the Intercontinental Hotel Group, which is I H G. We have a signed franchise agreement with I H G to bring this hotel to our city. A few things I'd like to emphasize, and then I'll turn it over to our architect to walk you through the design. It was mentioned that this project complies with all of the new updated downtown specific plan standards, and we envisioned that and wanted to address a few of the items and get out in front of it. One is parking, and the other is traffic. As it relates to the parking, as staff mentioned, we are providing a hundred and thirty-seven spaces. That's twenty-seven spaces more than what the code requires. We think that having additional parking can only benefit the project. The second item related to traffic, as mentioned, out on the site is a small office building, also a restaurant, a fast-food restaurant, and a drive-thru in that fast-food restaurant. Our analysis was done, the conclusion, I'll read it in part, is that the hotel project is expected to result in eighty fewer A M. peak hour trips and thirty-six fewer P M. peak hour trips than the existing land uses that currently are out on the site. So, less traffic as a result of this new project. We require no city subsidies, we require no zone changes, no variances, no parking reductions, and no sale of public land. We are a hundred percent privately financed and a hundred percent code compliant. I'll conclude my remarks on that, and then I'll turn it over to our architect to walk you through the design of the project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jeremy Grant.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. Thank you for having us here to present our project. My name is, again, Jeremy Grant. I'm with Tagawa Smith Martin. We office in downtown L.A. I'm the project manager and designer on the project. I am a resident of Altadena, California. I'd like to just go into the presentation here. The arrow button, is it? So, this boutique styled hotel, it's a limited-service hotel, and it consists of, as we stated, a hundred and thirty-seven guestrooms. It's a business-focused, so has business amenities focused, outdoor pool and spa areas, fitness center, a restaurant, bar. We have lounge, an outdoor lounge, indoor lounge, a lot of things for, for that business traveler. The treatment of the interiors, it will be taken from the regional influences, so it will make it a very distinctive and, and local hotel, a neighborhood hotel, very fitting for Glendale. The project provides approximately twenty-five-hundred square foot of open space, a very large public open space accessible, and it enhances, and it will enhance, the pedestrian level experience along North Central Avenue. The auto site access is through a driveway from North Central Avenue going into a covered and hidden drop-off area, and for the pedestrian, the entry is through our very nice and lush open space through a very distinctive and celebrated entry. Once in the hotel, the guest has the opportunity to, from the front desk after checking in, immediately adjacent to the lounge, the dining and bar areas, the restaurant. They can also travel up the, our focal element stairs to a second-level pool deck, fitness, lounge area, and all of this is very visible to the pedestrian, so it's, we find it's, it'll be very engaging and enhance that, that street experience. As mentioned before, we've been working with the city staff to make the project conform to all the requirements. You know, it conforms on form, site orientation, the street edge conditions, that large public open space, and, you know, great care was taken to make this a very distinctive and unique building for the Transitional District. So, we did that in the modulation of height and the facade, which you've seen, the building separation there in the middle. We intend that this project will enliven the downtown district, and it will activate the public realm with the mix of amenities, indoor and out around the hotel, and it will provide for the thousands of residences, residents and the workforce that's, that's currently around there, for them to get lunch, happy hour, you know, dinner and things. As you can see in this diagram, the hotel also provides an important transition from, excuse me, from the, the lower density.
Can, how many, how much?
I have like, two more minutes.
I'll give it, yeah.
All right, thank you. It provides a transition between the lower-density residential and the higher-density commercial use, you know, stimulating all the activity and development along that north-central corridor. So, the identity of the hotel is that we're wanting to improve the quality of the neighborhood through its architectural design. So, we're taking from the turn-of-the-century industrial style. In the early days of Glendale, this is very popular. There's a time when materials were natural, the details were handcrafted, the architecture was honest, and the hotel also functioned as a, a center of the community. You could make your deals there, you could celebrate your, your experiences there, and so we want to bring that back to community as making a cornerstone, a hotel cornerstone. So, the, the treatment of exterior is very much from those times, masonry, stone, brick, and it's modulated with a strong base, middle and top, kind of breaking down the architecture, make it more fitting and to the human scale. Though the architecture style is taken from, you know, history, we're using modern methods, so modern brick and stone and, and glazing methods. You can see very focal element here on the corner is that steel tower, so we're hoping to have a lot of handcrafted steel detail in there, kind of harkening back two hundred years ago. So, in conclusion, we're, you know, hoping that the light and landscaping really set this and give this a sense of human scale, and since that we've, we've believed that the project supports and contributes to the urban design in the neighborhood, that we hope that you approve and support the project in the central Transitional District. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. We may have some after the speakers are through.
I think I may have forgotten to shave this morning, and I apologize. Anyway, City Council and Mayor Najarian, I'm quite sure the ground-floor restaurant, or is it restaurants, would be considerably more expensive than the Burger King restaurant is right now. And according to recent Glendale News Press letter writer Noel Johnson, there are currently four multi-story hotels in Glendale already comprising some one thousand rooms, plus there are three more under construction that will add another three hundred and sixty-five rooms. There's also a twenty-five-story, two-hundred-plus rooms hotel proposed for the undeveloped area near Brand and Glen Oaks Boulevards, near the current Hilton Hotel. In addition, there's another hotel proposed for the undeveloped area near Brand and Sanchez, which would add another eight hundred and fifty rooms. That would give Glendale a total of two thousand and fifteen rooms. Now, the five-one-five through five-twenty-three North Central Avenue demolition proposal would be for yet another hotel, a seven-story one, plus a required hundred and thirty-seven, it turns out, hundred and thirty-seven parking spaces. That would add an additional hundred and forty-two rooms. However, unlike the other properties, this proposal would necessitate, on North Brand Boulevard, that would add, this proposal would necessitate the demolition of several thriving businesses, and these said rooms could well be said to have been built on the corpus delecti of a flourishing Burger King and its adjacent small businesses. I would concur with Councilwoman Paula Devine that, at least according to Noel Johnson's said letter, wherein she recently said that more thought should be given to the needs of the city's ordinary residents, not to mention Burger King customers, wherever they're from, and I'm from Los Feliz, but I'm in, I'm spending money on Glendale all the time, than to prospective hotel guests.
Thank you, Mr. Pierson.
Let him finish. You let the other guy finish?
I'm done.
He's done, sir, so whoever makes that comment, you're, first of all, out of order, second of all, you don't know what you're talking about. If you would like to address the council...
Yeah, I would.
...you can fill out a card and address us.
Put my card.
Mr. Gregg. I can't read the last name.
Guzik.
Guzik. Greg Guzik.
Yes. Well, my concern is the economically depressed people that live in that area, and again, I don't think they're going to be going to that restaurant. The restaurant, the bar, the other restaurant, the other bar, the pool, are they going to have the access to that area? I mean, the open, the open public access, are they going to have that access? Anybody that lives in that neighborhood, can they go and hang out at the hotel area, the open access? Because those are my main questions, so I'd like that answered. Thank you.
Let's address that question. There is public open space in this project. Mr. Landzaffam, can you tell us again exactly where it's located and who is entitled to use that public open space?
If you, you have, there, public open space is located just off of Central, or at Central, right at the entrance to the hotel. It is public open space. You have a requirement that it is accessible to the public, and so it is large enough that people are invited to go and use that space, small respite park, if you will.
If someone wanted to go across the street to the McDonald's and bring their lunch to that public open space and sit down and eat, is that permitted?
Yes, there will be some rules for, much like we have in our park, but it is public open space. You can bring your lunch, you can sit, eat out there, and enjoy the open space.
Okay. And I want to make sure, I've made some complaints previously on some of our previously approved and constructed buildings, that that public open space component is many times either physically blocked or used in other methods, so as a general statement, I want to make sure that we, make sure that, that open space designated as public open space remains as such. Mr. Quintero.
That was going to be my question, what type of furniture, street furniture, benches, what was going to be available there at the entrance?
I, I'll let them respond. I'm not sure that those have been detailed, but if...
They have been in the... Mr. Khan, if you have answers, or the architect, please let us know.
Mayor Najarian, Councilmember Quintero. Yes, we have a conceptual plan where we would have benches out there. We also have some small tables that we'd have for publicly accessible. In terms of the final plan, the final plan will be in Stage Two, but we will have outdoor seating area for the public to be able to come and bring their drinks, food, and congregate.
Let me ask, let me go a little further. If a pub, member of the public, not a guest of the hotel, wanted to use the restaurant or the bar or whatever dining or drinking facility there is, is that going to be open to public patrons, not guests, who are not guests of the hotel?
The answer is yes, Mayor Najarian. That is, the restaurant does serve the residents, the, the people that are staying there, but it'll also be open for the public to be able to use as well.
Okay. Any other questions of Ms. Khan? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
No, I don't have any right now.
I have, Jerry, Mr. Agajanian.
Thank you.
I don't know. First, I want to make sure that there will be no wall barriers, even shorter wall around this parking area, because that will make it, can make it such that only patrons of the hotel will come there. So, there will be no wall, whether it's tall or shorter one, because even shorter wall gives the impression that this belongs to the hotel area, so there should be no obstacle to walk to the parking, to the park area. The second thing, the architect mentioned the open space is over two thousand five hundred, and on this drawings which has been presented, it shows two thousand five hundred sixty. But in, later it mentioned, and he mentioned, that will be forty by sixty. Although the difference is minor, I don't want, so forty by sixty is twenty-four hundred. Twenty-five sixty is hundred sixty square foot larger, so I don't keep this vague, although I understand this is Phase One, but during the design, I don't want to have a situation that we go back and make it forty by sixty. We have to have the twenty-five sixty, which has been mentioned, and that open space should not be smaller than twenty-five sixty, which has been mentioned on your proposal.
Would you like to address that?
Sure. Just real quick. Councilmember Agajanian, two things. One is the code actually requires us to provide two thousand three hundred and thirty-one square feet. We are providing two thousand five hundred and sixty square feet. It will be two thousand five hundred and sixty square feet, which is higher than what the code requires.
That's okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Are there more cards?
No, those are the cards.
Oh, that's it?
Yes, those are the last cards that I have.
I have some questions.
Yes, Ms. Devine.
If I may?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. First of all, to Mr. Peterson's comments about the park, my feelings about parking. The issue I had with a previous hotel was the fact that I had been there and, for a conference or workshop, and people had to park at another location because there wasn't enough parking in that hotel. This hotel is giving us more parking than is required, and I'm not sure, do you have meeting, meeting spaces in this hotel? Can you answer that for me? Like, how many people can we expect at a, at an event at this hotel?
I can say that the meeting spaces is relatively small for a hotel. There's a small, maybe four hundred square foot meeting area, probably be at max, four people in that room, and the larger meeting, I think, meeting room is about a thousand square feet or so, and maybe you have a dozen people. So, we're hoping that, that they would be guests so that they would be parking there anyways.
I see. Okay, thank you. So, so that would, that would kind of alleviate my concern about parking. It seems that that, that's going to be adequate. First of all, I want to thank, thank Rodney and the architects for the photos that you provided today, because this gives a clearer picture of what this hotel will look like, and quite frankly, I'm impressed. I like the, the design, the, it has all the qualities that we've always talked about, modulation, undulation, and mixed finishes, et cetera, so it's, it's very, it's interesting, and it, it looks like a good architecture. I'm also pleased because I can see the landscaping, and I would like to make sure that somewhere in the, the contract project or whatever is written, that the landscaping looks just like it does on this picture, because I know we've had an issue with other development that doesn't seem to end up looking like we see it and like we approve it, and I know this is just the first step, but I'm, I'm real, I really am concerned about the softness, the, the walkability, and the, the green, and not just a concrete wall. So, I like this because it has a lot of glass. The other thing is, the picture helps me out as well, because I read somewhere about open dining, and I, I guess the front, the dining room will open to the, the street, which I, I think is fantastic, and I, I really, I really like that. Thank you for the parking, the traffic study, because I was concerned about traffic, and I know all of us are always, that's the top of our list of, you know, what's going to happen here, and what are we causing, and to know that this is going to be less, less traffic than at the Burger King, fine. Let's see, this is, I want to let everybody know, this is a by right. You're not asking for variances or, or any exceptions. There's, there's actually no, there, there isn't a way that we can not okay this hotel because it is by right. You have every right to build it. What we're doing here is simply looking at the architecture and the site and making sure that, that it's appropriate, and I, I also appreciate the fact that you're looking back at the history of the city, and this is not going to, it doesn't seem to look like a building that was just put there all of a sudden. It looks like it might have been there for a while and maybe redone a little bit or updated, but, but that works, that works for me. Is there any art component that's going? Is there any art component that's going to be added to this, this site? Because we're, we're in the midst of an urban art program here in the, in the city. And, you know, that's an important element to a lot of people.
Councilmember Divine, as of right now, we haven't determined whether we would pay the in-lu fee or we would incorporate art onsite. So before we come before you again for the final stage, we'll know that answer and have that worked out.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Of course, if you did a, an art element, it would probably take away from the open space and people may not like that. So it's a, you know, it's a, we'll have to look at that. I'd like to ask some questions about the, the conditions that were put on the building, on the... On the resolution, on the condition number one to explore pushing the lower floors of the Central Bay a few feet closer to the street. Is that going to cause the, a reduction in the green space at all?
It could cause a reduction, but what, what the intent of that condition is, isn't to, it's nothing substantial, maybe one or two feet. So it could result in a reduction of that space.
Okay, but not...
Nothing substantial.
This is, this is simply for architectural reasons?
Yes.
Okay. I want to make sure that we keep that, that open space at where you are. Explain number four, extending the industrial quality of the built, corner of the building. Openings and cornices proposed to have the flat metal to provide a more integrated, tell me...
So at the, at the building entry, the, essentially the frame of that entry, there are flat metal panels and staffills. It would be a better design to incorporate the I-beam look of the, the corner element, the steel beams of the corner into that part of the design.
Okay, okay. I'm going to trust staff on that one. The fifth one is to modify the blank facade wall adjacent to the alley. I like that idea because it is, it is really a, a blank, blank wall. Okay, so that's, that's good. And the other one is to rebid, this is the one I need to know about because I'm also concerned about windows. Revise the staggered window pattern at the west facade to better integrate the areas into the overall design. And can you...
I don't think we have it up here, but it would be the elevation facing the alley.
Oh. Facing the alley? Oh, you mean on the other side?
Yes.
In the backs, on the backside? It's on the backside.
So it is the facade that you would see from the alley. And when you look at that elevation, let me just find the page. A43 is the rendering. And then...
4.3?
A49 is actually, that's the building elevation for the west facade, and that would show it better.
Sorry.
So essentially, the window pattern and this element here, they're, they're staggered as opposed to being more uniform.
Oh, I'm on the wrong...
A4.9.
Oh, I went to 4.1. Oh, here's 9. Okay, I've got it.
So this element here, you see how the window patterns are staggered at each level? Staff is recommending that that change.
Oh, yeah.
So it's more uniform.
Yeah, that...
And that would provide better consistency with the rest of the design as well.
Okay, okay. Yeah, thank you. So I agree with staff there. Okay, let me see. Other than that, let's see. Open space. Those are basically my questions and comments. Like I, I've stated, you know, we, this is something that is by right. They have the right to build it. And I think it's a great design. And I hope that I, I hope that when it's, comes to its fruition, that we see in that spot exactly what we see here, because it's very nice, very nice. Well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
You know, I, you know what, I do have another, a bit of a comment, and I want to, if I can, go ahead, or if someone else wants to go before while I'm looking through that.
Yeah. I'll support the project. And as Councilmember Divine says, it's not discretionary on, on our part. I did want to mention the workforce. I mean, these hotels coming into town, unless they provide living wages and, and benefits, what benefit is there to the city ultimately? So at the last meeting, Unite Local 11 was here. And they, they're not here today. But once again, I want the management of the hotel, or at least the developers to start with, to meet with Unite Local 11 and see about having a, a workforce that, in my opinion, is a stable workforce. When you deal with, with the men and women that work under Unite Here's banner, you get people that don't file for workers' compensation, that don't have issues, that show up to work on a regular basis, that are long-term employees. And so I think any company that works with them, including smaller hotel chains, it's not just the big companies. I know plenty of smaller companies that work with Local 11. And at the end of the day, they wind up with a much better situation. Is there someone here from management in addition to the development people? Is there someone here that works for this company? Because I'd like to have him come to the podium.
Good evening. I'm Chris Dobbins with Intercontinental Hotel Group. Councilmembers and mayor, glad to be here, glad to support this project. However, this is a franchise. So we're not managing the property. There will be a third party approved by us that would manage, and so...
Right, well, yeah, I didn't mean to talk to Intercontinental. I'd like to talk, there must be someone here that is, that is part of the ownership group. So Mr. Khan, is there someone who's actually part of the ownership group? Or these gentlemen all work for...
Councilmember Quintero, we, we do have the ownership group here. They are here, they are hearing what you said. If I could address it, the last time that this was scheduled for public hearing, we did see the union members, I did hand them out, a few of them, my business cards. And so I was looking forward to discussions with them. I have not yet heard back. I think I'd mentioned that before. But we value the unions, we'll talk to them, we'll consult and sit down with them. But once again, we have not heard from them since that last hearing.
Okay. Is there someone from the ownership group that can come to this podium now that you're done? Is there someone from the ownership group that wants to address?
Mayor, council members, my name is Varan Gourjan. I serve as general counsel to the ownership group and their representative. As Mr. Khan mentioned, we did try to reach out to the union representatives after we noticed their presence here last time. We do look forward to speaking with them and seeing if an arrangement can be made. However, to clarify, as Mr. Dobbins from Intercontinental Hotel Group mentioned, the structure is that the ownership itself will not be managing the project, and it will be a third-party management group approved by Internet, Intercontinental Hotel Group. So we will bring this matter to their attention also, to make sure it's on everyone's radar and something for everyone to consider as we move forward with this project.
Okay, good. Well, that's what I wanted to hear, a commitment from the ownership group that the management company that they employ will in fact be reaching out to Unite Here.
We will definitely bring this to their attention. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I very much like the design. I think it's going to look great on that corner. And I assume that the hotel itself will own the restaurant or be operating the restaurant and so forth. And so I'm sure the price point will be, will be reasonable to compete with the surrounding restaurants. So all in all, it's a good project. I think it's going to work well for, for the city of Glendale.
Thank you. You ready to...
I, I do. I just wanted to, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to cite an article that I read this morning about hotels. And I know that in speaking to our residents, we always get a lot of pushback about hotels and do we need them? And, you know, how many rooms do we need? And all the traffic and the congestion, et cetera. And the article that I read this morning said that corporate travel coupled with huge tourism is driving up hotel demand. And I think that we, we see that here in Glendale. We have businesses that bring in staff from other cities. We have families here who have relatives that live in other countries and other cities, other states, and they come to visit. And a lot of times, there are not rooms available. And I've been contacted by friends who have, who have said that to me. We have a, because of the business base that we have here in California, because of our weather and our, the, a lot of trade shows and conferences are being held here, business growth, there is a need for hotels. And we are no different than any other city. We're close to Pasadena, where they have the Rose Bowl game, they have the parade, and we have Disneyland, we have Universal, we have a lot of attractions in our area. And, and we just don't, quite frankly, don't have rooms for all of them. And I want to ask Mr. Lanzafame or Ms. Beers, was he correct, Harvey, was he correct in the number of rooms that we have? Do you...
It's close. I don't have the exact number off the top, but it's close. Between the Embassy Suites and, and the Hilton, there's 600 there. And then we've added the Hampton Inn and the Hyatt Place.
Okay, all right. But, but the article ended by saying that the hotel boom in our state is not over and that we're finally catching up. So Glendale's finally catching up, and soon we will have accomplished the goal of having enough rooms for family to visit, for friends to visit, and for business and corporations to have their employees come to Glendale for meetings and conferences. So that's what I wanted to say, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I just have a few comments, and I'd like to carry on with what, what you were saying about the, the article. I'm not sure where it was at, but I know several years ago, we did a hotel demand study. It may be time to do another one and see where we are, taking into account these new hotels that are coming in. I, I think several years ago, it was a 700-room deficit that we had. I think we've gone close to meeting that, but that doesn't mean that the, the bar has, has moved a little further because of the things that Ms. Divine was talking about. So I'd like to get that information at some point. So this architecture and design is based on our new DSP standards. And wow, what a difference that, that it has made. This is probably going to be the best-looking building on North Central when you compare it to all that other boxy stuff. The Onyx, the Altana, the Modera, the Legend, Lexon Orange, all that other stuff is just... Although the council approved it, it doesn't have the sort of architectural finesse that this building has. And I think that if those other projects had this sort of architectural attention, that half the criticism that we get as a council would not, would not be there. So I like the project. It is, it's fully parked. It is giving us a lower use at the peak times compared to the Burger King, the drive-through, the in-and-out. The public space is all there. It's an of-right, a by-right development. So even if I wanted to, I don't think I would have any grounds to, to deny this stage-one approval. So I'm going to just leave it at that. Mr. Agajanian?
I would like to move the item.
With the comments as presented? Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Zaga... Councilmember Zaga-Janian?
Yes.
Farpetian? Quintero?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is Director of Community Development regarding 145 South Central Avenue Urban Space Project, request for combined stage one and two design review and creative sign for exterior dining installation consisting of a combination of food trucks and shipping containers located on the east of the side of the Glendale Galleria Mall entrance along South Central Avenue in the DSP Galleria Downtown Specific Plan Galleria District Zone. QA is a motion approving stage one design and stage two design, and B is a motion approving creative sign.
And Mr. Mayor, for the record, there's a revised motion at item number two. Yes, we have a revised motion at item two, and that's before us. Ms. Beers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council will go directly to Mr. Calvert, who will provide the information based on council feedback that was given on December 17th, 2019. Mr. Calvert.
Deputy Mayor Najarian, members of City Council. As mentioned, this project is coming back based on council feedback. When we saw that on December 7th, there were a couple items that council wanted us to consider. This is a combined stage one and stage two design review, and it also includes a creative sign as, as well. When we were here before, council requested that there be some modifications to the color scheme, so we're going to discuss some of those changes that have been made. Essentially, there will be two alternatives for council to decide upon if they do wish to move forward with this design review. Council also asked to consider opportunities for more openings along Central Avenue, and then to reach out to the Downtown Glendale Association to get some of their feedback and input on this project as well. So this will be a pretty brief presentation. We just want to provide a recap of what this proposal is, what those responses were to, to those items. And again, this is a combined stage one and two design review. So this is in a, is an elevation looking across Central. This is looking at one of the color schemes that, that's been, that will be presented. Again, not, nothing has really changed in terms of this design. There are the same number of openings along Central. There has been some refinement, which we'll show in a moment, of kind of that landmark corner feature. One of the reasons why there were not more openings included is essentially it would have required the removal of some of the food trucks and/or the shipping containers, which essentially would have made the project infeasible at that point. Would not have been able to hit that kind of critical mass that it needs. Just for a recap, this is the location. This is on Central, at the Galleria, facing that or along that, that kind of long blank brick facade, just across from the Americano. This is the current site conditions. The elevation or the plan image there at the bottom is the proposed conditions. You can see it's retaining some of those large feature trees that are in the area, retaining some of that landscaping to ensure that it is still green. If we zoom in on some of the elevations, this is the, the opening and the entrance at the southern portion. You can see the, the legend there at the top, the red box is highlighting this elevation. The kind of corner feature there before incorporated a look of that corrugated metal from the shipping containers, it also incorporated some wood. You'll see that it's been updated, has a little bit more relief, a little bit more refinement, again, kind of adding some depth. We had heard some comments to try to, again, kind of soften up that corrugated metal look, that industrial look. So this is one of the opportunities where that was able to happen. You can see on the, the elevations of the shipping containers, there are elements of green being incorporated, there are also planters being incorporated as well, especially along the, the food trucks to try to mitigate the look of those. This is the center portion of that elevation. This is the second opening. This is not an entrance. This will be kind of a, a window into the, the food hall, the food market. It'll be an opportunity for those that are dining to be able to look out on the street, but also create opportunities for engagement with those that might be passing by, those that are using. Again, you can see in, in this color scheme, this is incorporating some softer elements. This is one that we'll talk about in a moment, but essentially that cool tone palette, a lot of blues, a lot of greens. If you recall in the prior presentation, this central feature would also illuminate at night. So it would have kind of a dynamic facade to it that would help activate it in the evening hours as well. If we move further north, this is the third opening along Central. This is the northern entrance. Again, you can see where we've tried to soft, or where the applicant has tried to soften up the corrugated metal look. So you see a lot of vegetation, you see some wood starting to be incorporated... So you see a lot of vegetation, you see some wood starting to be incorporated in some of these as well. Again, really trying to create that softer appearance, something that has a little more of a, speaks to the landscape that's around, but still is a, a modern urban feel to it. So the color palettes that, that were discussed that council can, can choose from or recommend based on the, the applicant here, the first is the cool tones. And this is really looking at kind of a blue, green, a little bit of a brown palette. The intent here is to try to speak to some of the landscape elements that are around, again, many of the trees being preserved on this site. The second is more of an earth tone. This is reds, browns, creams, yellows that are being incorporated. And that was in response to the request to really speak to the architecture around it. And that is that brick facade of the Galleria, really trying to pick up on that color palette. And this may be a little difficult to see on this. The applicant has brought some boards, if council would like to see them up close, that, that we can show. And they also have a video that they can show as well to get a little bit more definition and refinement. But in comparison, if we're looking at that's, that kind of central elevation, the top is that cool tones color palette, again, the kind of greens, blues being incorporated. And then the lower is that, that earth tone, which is more of the red tans, colors that speak to the, the facade of the Galleria. So again, staff is recommending approval, stage-one, stage-two design review combined as well as the, the creative sign application. That concludes the presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you. Are there any immediate questions? I do have two cards from speakers. Michael McGrath and Stephen Sayers.
Hello, Mayor and Council.
My name is Michael McGrath. I'm the chief operating officer for Urban Space. Thank you for taking the time to look at this again. We have a, a video that we can show you that addresses some of the questions and concerns that came up last time, particularly opening this space up and also the colors as were discussed. So you're looking at this from across the Americano, across the crosswalk into where the space would be just north of the Galleria sign. Kind of speaks for itself, so I don't need to narrate for you. We addressed, you know, some of the shipping containers with more wood as was requested. And here you'll see the space opens up into the central gathering, gathering space where people can congregate and eat and spend time in the space. Worked to soften the tones, soften the colors, pre-recommendations, added more greenery. Now, this is in the event of a solar eclipse or at nighttime, this is what it'll look like. So we tried to make the facades dynamic so that they looked different at night than they did during the day. So it's a different experience, but also is interesting and dynamic and appealing. So if you're walking down the street, it's something you'll stop and want to take a look And something else to add is these are, would all be small businesses, the majority local. We've already been, from our last meeting, I've been reached out, a couple of different vendors have reached out to me. One's a local family that has a food truck that wants to be involved. So they're interested in the project and interested in being involved. And as I mentioned last time, Urban Space's mission is to develop small businesses. And so how we do that is by creating these opportunities in cities and in parts of communities where they might not be able to. And, you know, create an opportunity for, for them to build their business. Is there any other questions I can answer for you?
Any questions of the speaker? Thank you for the video.
Thank you very much.
Helps us visualize it. Next speaker is Stephen Sayers.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Stephen Sayers. I'm the general manager of the Glendale Galleria. I also sit on the board of directors for the Downtown Glendale Association. I wanted to speak to you today regarding your request at the last council meeting that we reached out to the other DGA board members, which I did last week. They're all very busy people, of course. I did receive one response from Randy Stevenson, who voiced his support for the project. If you have any further questions, happy to answer.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the update. Mr. Agajanian?
The item.
Well, I think we have to choose.
Yes.
You want cool or do you want earth tone?
I have a problem with that. Because these people, they hired architects, engineers, and they, they, I mean, why we have to get involved with it and say what we like?
Well, last time we kicked them, we kicked them out because we didn't like the colors. We said, come back with these.
I understand, but we have to do-
Pick a color. Pick a color, Viraj.
My question is, which one is more colorful? Which one is more dynamic?
I'd say the earth tone.
I prefer the earth tones, but which one will make a bigger-
Impact.
Impact on the, I, I would-
Earth. I think earth has the reddish in there and the yellows a little, pops a little more.
And if I can make a comment.
Yes.
I read another article today about Sears in the Valley is opening a huge food mart. And this kind of goes right along with that, that concept. And it could be really fun. I, I'd like the, I, I vote for the earth tones.
Mr. Quintero? I agree with Mr. Agajanian that the original colors were just fine, but whatever, we have to give our opinion. Yeah, earth tones to me are, are the best bet. I am happy that you've added so much green, the vertical walls. I think that's gonna look really good. And then as a longtime Glendale resident, I think that in the summer, you're probably gonna want, give you a hot tip, you're probably gonna want to do some type of overhead because it's gonna be very hot. That south-facing, that south-facing facade, it's gonna be super hot. So, but all in all, this is exciting. I've had the opportunity over the holidays to actually point out what's going in there to a couple of people I was with. And they were excited. They thought it was gonna be a, a great addition. And I'm happy to hear that there's some local companies that are thinking about coming in. But anyway, it's a great addition to, to the street. I mean, that's basically a drive-through street at this point. And hopefully it'll get a little more pedestrian-friendly and, anyway, looking forward to having you put it up quickly.
Thank you. I would like to move the item since they said earth tones. I'm ready to move with that one.
Okay. I'll say- No, I, I will agree with you. And I also agree about the earth tones. So you've made a motion. Is there a second?
Yes.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
R. Petian?
Quintero?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
I think that concludes our business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Second.
Okay. Special meeting is adjourned. And I call to order the regular-